I'm calling to order a meeting of the Anchorage School Board. Today is Monday, August 21st, 2017. Present are all board members with the exception of Betty Davis and our Student Advisory Board Member Kaylee Spencer. Mr. Donnelly, would you please lead us in the flag salute? Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the Constitution of our homeland, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's my handle. Thank you very much. And with today's meeting, we're going to start a new protocol here, and that's our safety moment. So, thank you for being here. Restrooms are at the far end of the hall, directly across the atrium, and an automated electronic defilibrator, an AED, is located across the hall in a white box, and a first aid kit is mounted on the wall by the second exit. Now, we do not conduct evacuation drills during our meetings. If an alarm sounds or an alert is announced, please begin to take safe action immediately. In the event we have to evacuate this building, there are four doors located on your left or my left, your right, and they all have an exit sign over them. Once you enter the atrium, proceed quickly along the safest route to a door leading out of the building. If you do not have a vehicle here, or it is unsafe to enter your vehicle, and you need a place to wait for help, we have designated the parking lot next to the gas station as our rally point. If you see something that is dangerous, we encourage you to speak up and clearly alert the room of the danger you see. And we encourage everyone to quickly begin to take safe action. Information will be provided throughout the event as available, so everyone can best decide the safest action to take, given the current situation. And for the month of August, we want to remind you that school has resumed, and therefore there's more foot and vehicular traffic. There's a reactivation of school zones and the lower speed limits, so there's increased travel time, so we appreciate your respecting that. Additionally, remember to keep children's book bags appropriately sized for their age and stature. Evaluate the total amount of weight that children are being required to carry and keep it as low as possible. So, thank you. It's our safety moment for today. Our student representative is not here, so I will do this opening statement on her behalf. We want to welcome you to our board meeting and thank you for attending and supporting the work of the Anchorage School District and this board. The board thanks students, parents, teachers, staff, school business partners, and the entire community for your investment in our district with your time, your talent, and your tax dollars. As partners, we will respect your time and make this meeting as effective and efficient as possible. If you are unable to be physically present for the entire meeting, you may choose to tune in to the Municipality of Anchorage's Channel 9 to watch any school board meeting. Meetings are also streamed live and available on demand via the ASD website. Recordings of the meetings are available on YouTube through the agenda. To access it, you find the desired meeting in Board Docs. Click on the "Watch Video" button, and the recordings are timestamped to the agenda for easy access and closed captioned in compliance with Section 508 of the Rehabilitation Act. Now, the primary purpose of the regular business meeting of the Anchorage School Board is to recognize excellence, receive reports, approve policies and contracts, as well as to decide on the rules and processes followed by the board to facilitate orderly decision-making. The role is to govern, not to solve management issues. Thank you. So, at this point, we're going to move to the approval agenda, but I would like to revise the agenda to add a non-action memo 034, which is the award of contract purchase of frozen food products for the second quarter fiscal year 2017-2018. So, if there's no objection, we will post a revised agenda, and then we'll vote on this agenda, or we'll move ahead on this agenda. Any objections to that revision to the agenda? Are there any other revisions as the agenda stands? Seeing none, we have an agenda for this meeting. We will move to public testimony on non-action items. The board welcomes public comments on agenda items, both action and non-action, as well as in general. We value public comment, as it both ensures that we remain aware of public thoughts, ideas, and concerns, and it informs our decision-making process. We have a table front and center with two seats and microphones available for testimony when I call your name. You have three minutes to testify, and you may begin speaking when the timer appears on the screen to your left and begins the countdown. When you have 30 seconds left, the number will turn yellow, and when the timer reaches zero, please finish your sentence. Additionally, it's not the practice that board members answer questions or engage in discussion with members of the public during this testimony. This is your time to speak and our time to listen. The board will consider all information shared by the public, and when deemed necessary, issues raised in testimony will be referred to the administration for follow-up. So, our first speaker on our non-action items is Vanessa Heratsuka. Would you like to please come forward? Either seat. Thank you.
Hello, board members.
Hello.
Hello, staff. Hello, everyone. I'm Vanessa Heratsuka. I am chairperson of your Title VI Native Advisory Committee, and I had asked to come before you today for several reasons. One is that our Native American Advisory Committee had met just a few days ago here in this building, and the parents, the teachers that were there, the staff, had wanted to make sure that this year and in subsequent years, we come before you, if not on a biweekly basis, on a monthly basis, to give our thanks, to share our concerns, and to give you guys updates on what it is our committee is doing and what the Title VI program is doing. We have so many tribal students here at the Anchorage School District, and on behalf of the parents, I want to say thank you. Thank you on this first day of school. It's been a fantastic first day of school, I think, for so many staff, but also for the parents and the students. As we come to you, I'd like to say thank you for supporting our summer enrichment program that was held two times here for our younger students. It's my understanding that the summer enrichment program was one where we had quite a bit of language involvement. We had cultural enrichment of our students. It's very nice to be able to do that on a daily basis rather than on a pull-out basis. This is something that so many of our tribal parents look forward to, and I know myself as a mom whose daughter has gone to it for several years, she very much looked forward to it, and as an opportunity to hear and speak multiple tribal languages. We're also really excited about the additional staff that have been hired through the Title VI program and the additional funding that the Title VI program had come into due to looking at tribal enrollment of the students. And with the additional staffing, several new schools will have cultural enrichment and counselors available to support the parents and the students and the staff of those schools. We're looking forward in the upcoming year to tell you about how that's going, to describe any of the support that might be happening. We're also wanted to mention that we have a vacancy right now on our Native American Community Advisory Committee for a student, not a student position, rather, I should say, a teacher position, and then also for a parent position. The vacancy is open until the 18th, and please look at the website if any of you, as teachers, as staff, are interested, or if any of the tribal parents are interested as well. So, again, I just want to say thank you, and I hope to see you many, many more times in this upcoming school year.
Thank you very much, Vanessa.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Donnelly.
Since this organization's one of our committees, maybe in the future, they could report under committees and not be under such a tight time constraint.
We'll put that on the discussion list for tomorrow when we're doing the scheduling. Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Steve Johnson. Please come forward.
Thanks for the opportunity to address the board, and I appreciate that. It was about a year ago that I visited this board to receive a service recognition award for the SEAL debate programs' efforts to promote debating in ASD middle schools. I was proud to receive that award because I think ASD Middle School Debate has been a very successful program. It was established six years ago, started with three partner schools, Begich, Clark, and Mirror Lake, and over the past six years, over 15 middle schools have participated. And at our most recent championship last spring, we've had our first out-of-city, out-of-district school come down from Fairbanks to compete. That championship last April featured 37 teams made up of 111 students who got together on a Saturday of their own volition to practice argumentation and critical thinking. But as of Friday, I've been notified that our middle school league, debating league, is in crisis. As we start this year, Begich, Goldenview, Romeg, and Central are unlikely to have teams participating in this league. Of the 37 teams that were at last spring's championships, 21 of those teams were from those schools. The move to block scheduling has compromised the ability to host or to feature debating as an elective course, thereby depriving students of an option to take debating as a class, and depriving teachers, particularly the most dedicated teachers, the option to teach those classes. Some examples: Kevin Voss at Begich Middle School was an early debate adopter who wrote the debate curriculum for ASD. Janelle Phi of Romeg Middle School was a 2017 VP Teacher of the Year and one of the most successful middle school debate coaches. Heather Beck of Goldenview Middle School was a 2016 Teacher of the Year. He was currently authoring a text on middle school debating. These three individuals will not be teaching students to debate this year, will not be coaching their debate teams this year. In some cases, debate is going to survive at these places, but in less desirable means in unpaid after-school clubs, shoehorned into advisory periods, or taught by substitutes or teachers with no disciplinary expertise, for example, at Begich, where there will be a special ed math teacher hired who will also have as their responsibility to teach debate. I think debate is a pedagogy worth preserving. It speaks well to Generation Z students who have shorter attention spans, who struggle with complex problems requiring sustained focus, who lack socio-emotional skills like connecting with and communicating with others. Debate meets those challenges very well. It provides competitive incentives to read, to analyze, to work in teams, and to communicate. It's student-directed learning. It fits very well with the common core, with their emphasis on argumentation and language arts, and it's one entire hour where students don't have a screen to watch. And if you don't believe yet that the debate is valuable, consider that all of the concern that you're currently having about start times for high school was initiated by a young man named Matthew Park, who was a middle school debater for Romeg Middle School, who debated that topic in the spring semester of 2016, and was inspired to bring that very issue forward to the school board for public consideration. So, I would ask that we work together to do what we can to preserve this unique and valuable activity for our middle school students. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I'd like to refer that to the administration for follow-up with the board. Thank you. Okay, that concludes our public testimony. Excuse me.
Madam President.
Sir.
Yeah, that follow-up would explain what happened here, because I'd be very, I want to understand it better. Thank you.
And I misspoke. I wanted to see if, give an opportunity for anyone who was in the audience who did not sign up, who would like to speak on non-action items. Seeing none, then we will conclude our non-action item, non-agenda item testimony at this point. I don't believe we have a representative for a military report at this meeting. We will at our next, so I want to move now to the superintendent update.
Thank you, Madam President. I did want to initially report that we're having our enrollments done, and today we are at 94% of projected enrollment. And over the trend of the last five years, we have been, on the first day of school, anywhere between 94% and 96%. So, we're right in where we want to be and going to look every day in regard to getting students enrolled. And there's a difference between enrolling and then moving them over year to year, and we're going to clean that up. So, we'll have each day a report to the board in regard to where we are on that, starting tomorrow. In addition, just wanted to share today, and a welcome back. It was just briefly, it was a great first day in ASD, and I wanted to share that there was, in speaking to a couple of board members as well as some staff, in regard to really making a statement about who we are and being a safe place. So, on the website, we do have a first-day message in regard to just being reminded of the excitement, energy, enthusiasm of our students, staff, and community in ASD, and supporting our community. Thanks to them for supporting strong public education. We also shared in the letter that Anchorage School District is committed to being a place of safety and acceptance for all. We discuss that one in five residents on any given day walk through our doors, because if you took all of our students and staff that come to us each day. We're committed to attitudes that condemn racism and violence, which have made the headline news, and just wanted to ensure that all folks are welcome with us, and they're all safe, and we're focusing on our mission to be the very best we can be for every kid in our community. So, that was first and foremost today. Over the last week, just wanted to share, since our last meeting, we did have the Capturing Kids' Hearts PD at Fort Begich, Romeg, West, and Bartlett Schools. So, this was the first day of Capturing Kids' Hearts, if you will. Went very well, but we had seven locations. Again, many of the board members did stop by to view the trainings. We also had new teacher training, which was engaging right in this room, and you see Dr. Knutson up in the front there behind one of our newest teachers from Japan, but had a fun, engaging day as well with our new teachers. We, Indian Ed, did bring up Zaretta Hammond, who focuses on equity education, and talked about the difference between culturally awareness, cultural awareness in our classrooms, social justice, and the difference between that and teaching for equity, and how we really can do our best in our lane as educators to really make the true difference. And a lot of the discussion that she had, if you went then to Capturing Kids' Hearts, it was nearly identical with, in regard to the types of classrooms we want to have, the type of instruction, and how we want to connect with students. We had several days, which I have some direct information. We wanted to get this for you in your newsletter. We'll publish it this Friday. But we had, August 14th, we had all staff attended the training on trauma-informed care at Diamond High School, so all staff from all four schools. On the 14th, we had, on the 15th, nine violent crisis intervention at the individual schools back at their home schools. On August 16th, all SBBS staff were in their classrooms setting up their learning spaces with new furniture and curriculum. We had a half-day literacy training in neighborhood schools for all SBBS staff, as well as gathered at UAA to discuss the SBBS program. August 18th, we had the Back to School event for SBBS staff, school staff, and some board members did attend. In addition, we trained reliant bus drivers and ASD bus driver attendants on the basic behavior training from the Elementary Special Education Department. So, we're really trying to do an outreach to have this new program successful. As you know, we did close the school this year, Mount Illiamna, and began five new programs, the four Tyson Lakewood Baxter, as well as Cassoon, and we also have a SBBS program at Whaley for our youngest Tier III kids. Also, these are some of the Instagram pics that were posted with us today of first-day pics around the district. So, lots of excitement from our kids in our community, all ages. We still take first-day pics. Fun to have. We did, while we closed one school, we opened another school, and some board members attended an opening today of the Alaska Middle College School. We did reach, we were expecting 120 and 150 students actually attended. So, they have their boot camp this week, because of course, college doesn't start till next week for students, and so we have them this week to really learn the ins and outs of being a college student. Wanted to share briefly with you and have some documents. If you want to take these with you, we have several. We'll just pass them on half, but the preliminary work through the school district, we're quite excited. This data, these data did not come out last spring when we were discussing at the board retreat, but hot off the press, it is preliminary, because the state has not sent out its audit. It's the, once they publish these data, then they are, I guess, accounted for, but it's preliminary and continues to be, but very excited about the four-year graduation rate, the one that we strive to meet, not only for all students. It went up slightly, but many of the categories for which we have struggled in the past years, we are making up, narrowing the gap. So, we are making up the gap more in certain student groups than we are for all students, which is part of narrowing that gap. Some of the successes that we wanted to celebrate with our community are certainly for African-American or Black. Increased from 73.9, about 74 to 79. Alaska Native American Indian group increased from about 56 to 63. I did have a meeting with ASD staff, Doreen Brown, as well as Glenn Nielsen and his team did participate at the CITC parent meeting this weekend with me in really a discussion of their different needs at CITC. So, that occurred this Saturday. In our Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander, we increased quite a bit from 71 to 78. And then finally, the last of our four that were the most, had the most disproportionality was special education, and then in special education, we also made a over 5% increase. So, I am just, again, these are numbers, and we're not celebrating numbers. There's actually blood, sweat, and tears behind them of students and their families, as well as staff and programming. It is a lot of work, so I want to celebrate the work and the focus of our community, whether it's our school community or broader community, in bringing success to all of our students time and time again in ASD, and again, reaching for that narrowing of the gap to ensure that it doesn't matter race or creed, or the your zip code of the school you attend, that you will achieve and be able to meet your dreams in ASD. So, that was good news on Friday. Once again, our mission is educating all students for success in life, and so we want to ensure that what we do teach them actually helps them in life, and so we'll always be connected to that part of the equation through socio-emotional learning as well. That was just a brief update I wanted to share. We did have a few hiccups in schools to be expected on busing, you know, with students that stops. We just tried to resolve them as quickly as possible, knowing that providing customer service, if you will, of having not only our students but parents welcomed and being able to bring their concerns to us is appropriate. So, glad I saw many of you out at schools today, as well as our staff. We're taking this entire week and focusing ourselves outside of the building, and so staff really isn't in this building this week. They're moved outward. So, with that, that concludes the report, unless there's any questions, Madam President.
Do board members have questions? Thank you very much. We do not have a Student Advisory Board Representative Report tonight. We do have some committee reports. I believe there have been several committee meetings since our last, so we'll start with governance.
Governance met on August 9th. We went over the policy 0000, the 9,000, the 1,000, and the 2,000. We have the first reading for the zeros and the 9,000 tonight, and the 1 and the 2,000's the first meeting in September. And our next meeting is set for September 13th in 150, 330, 25. And we're going to be continuing to go along with our new, our new AASB policies, and what we'll do is we'll just have first readings, and then, once we've gone through all of the first readings, we'll adopt as a whole because of how it's, how our policy is structured. That's the only way we can accomplish it.
Thank you very much. Communications, Mr. Donnelly.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We did meet on the 8th of this month. We had a discussion of the priorities, I mean, the items that are listed there before the members, legislative priorities, federal Title I impacts, organizing a potential legislative luncheon. It's been traditional with the school district prior to the new legislative session, and extensive discussion on how to handle AASB resolutions, and then the AASB nomination process. On the resolutions, there's so many resolutions to examine. We decided the best way to handle it was by those board members, our board members, that have a concern with any of those resolutions, or have an idea of their own they want us to bring forward, to submit those to Katie, the board secretary, and that she will compile those concerns, rather than trying to go through every one. There may, some of them are just, you know, not controversial. And so, we've published a schedule that the members have had. Members could get those suggested changes or concerns to the board secretary by the 11th of September, and then our next meeting will be the 12th, and then we'll go over those, all those things that members have submitted, and come forward with a proposal, a recommendation to the full board, and that's scheduled for a vote of the board on September 25th. Any changes or concerns, position that Anchorage School District would take at upcoming meeting. That gives us time to submit our concerns or our suggestions to the AASB within their timeframe for their meeting, when they're going to be taking those matters up. We had a discussion about whether or not to do the legislative luncheon. I'm reaching out to the Anchorage Caucus and seeing what kind of suggestions we can get from their leadership regarding that this year. I would hope that, the attendance hasn't been stellar at those in the past, and so we're trying to come up with some other strategy to try to improve attendance at that. I don't, you know, we'll try, try to come up with some ideas. So, that is pretty much where we're at. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, and our finance chair, Ms. Snowy.
Finance has not met since May 22nd. We are going to be meeting on September 11th, and I'll have an agenda out shortly before that. It's 2:30 to 3:30 prior to our next regular board meeting, Room 150.
Thank you very much. And I do not believe there's been any conferences. Am I incorrect? Don't believe any conferences for board members to report on. Okay, thank you. That concludes our board conference and committee reports, and we move to our consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda. ASD memorandum 009, personnel report is revised, June 5th, 2017, work and executive session minutes. After, she has to. June 5th, 2017, regular session minutes. June 9th, 2017, special meeting minutes.
So, I will second it first, and then I would like to move to poll ASD memorandum number 009, personnel report revised as a separate vote.
Okay, so at this point, we're going to Okay, so at this point, we're going to vote. Second, thank you, this pooling is the second, okay? I need you to all vote on the consent agenda with the one memorandum pooled at this point. And the consent agenda is approved with six yea, zero nay and one not present at vote. Okay, at this point, when, in dealing with the personnel report, for obvious reasons, I'm going to recuse myself from the vote and stand down and let the Vice President take over the meeting.
Yep.
That's easy. At this time, I'd like to move if there is any discussion on. So it's not obvious to everybody why we just did that. The President Tamagasi Geisler's daughter has applied for a TA position at one of our schools and based on that information, there is a procedure that we have to go through and one of it is that the commission requires the board approval to vote on this and then it does go to the commissioner and then he has to approve this before it can go further. So is there any discussion on this personnel? Yes.
Do we have a motion before us?
No, Chair. We need one.
No, you pulled the motion, so.
I pulled it. I move to accept the memorandum 009, personnel report as revised.
I would second.
Okay, are we ready to vote?
Discussion?
Discussion, sorry.
I'd just like to also point out that the person, the hire in question was found to be the most qualified individual for the job, or else we wouldn't be proceeding through the long bureaucratic process of getting approval by the State Commissioner of Education to approve this particular hire.
And that information was passed to all the board members, so they are aware of that and have been given that information showing that that individual was highly qualified for that position and selected. Any further discussion? Okay, this time, let's vote. Okay, we have five yea, one not present and one abstain, so the motion passes. And I'd like to turn the gavel back over to the President, please.
Okay, moving on to action items. Open our public testimony. This is how it works for action items. An action item memo is first introduced by the Vice President and if seconded by another board member, I will open the floor for public testimony. If you have signed up in advance or indicate you're interested in providing testimony, I will call you to come to the front table to speak. You have three minutes to talk and you'll see a timer on the screen to your left to monitor the time remaining and inform you of when you need to conclude. After the testimony closes, I'll open the floor for board discussion, followed by the Student Board Representative vote normally, though not happening tonight, and the voting results will be displayed on the screen. So, Ms. Marsette.
At this time, I move to approve ASD memorandum 010, adopt a resolution recognizing September 9th, 2017, as Fetal Alcohol Spectrum Disorders Awareness Day.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, opening for public testimony. Seeing no one wishing to speak, I'm closing public testimony, opening board discussion. Closing board discussion, members please vote. It came. And the motion carries six yea, zero nay, one not present at vote.
I move to approve ASD memorandum 023 and authorize the Superintendent to accept a grant from the Alaska Department of Education and Early Development, Bigger Education Program in the amount of $48,000.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we'll now open for public testimony. Public testimony is closed, board discussion is now open. And that motion carries six yea, zero nay and one not present at vote.
I move to approve ASD memorandum 004, a scope modification to the Student Nutrition Efficiency Project to include replacing the existing refrigeration system and enclosing the loading dock.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, I'd like to open this for public testimony. Seeing no one wishing to testify, I'm closing public testimony and opening board discussion. Motion carries six yea, zero nay and one not present at vote.
I move to approve ASD memorandum 029, to adopt the tentative agreement between the district and the Anchorage Principals Association, which will establish terms and conditions of employment for individuals in this unit during the period between July 1, 2017 and June 30, 2020.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, now opening for public testimony. Seeing none, I'm closing public testimony, opening for board discussion. I would like to add, I appreciate the patience of this employee group as we have worked through our budgetary details and challenges this year and, because this contract has been in the process for a number of months, so thank you for your patience. Any other public board discussion? I'm closing board discussion, members please vote. And the motion carries six yea, zero nay and one not present at vote. And that concludes our action items, our agenda. We move to non-action items and again, if you recall, we revised the agenda to include one additional item and if you would like a copy of that, a printed copy, it is on, posted on the website, but I'm just going to go ahead and pass them out.
Madam President, as this was a request from administration, I would be happy to request our CFO, Jim Anderson, to review the processes and reasoning for this late acceptance onto non-action. Of course, it'll come before you again, but usually we try to stick to your established timeline and this wasn't, so I'd like to publicly declare reasons why, if that would be appropriate.
I think so, yes. Okay. Mr. Anderson, can you please explain the situation?
Of course, to the President. The frozen food and the food that student nutrition procures is done quarterly, sometimes a little bit more often. This particular bid went out, two of the bidders bid on the frozen food products. It looked like it would go to someone who scored the highest and at the last minute, they pulled out and so it left the remaining bidder and so the paperwork had to be redone and it put us several days behind the curve, but we needed to get this approved at the next board meeting in order to make sure the food is here on time, as our students are hungry this year and the food is superb.
I think they're hungry every year.
Are there any board questions? Ms. Nellie?
On the memo under the pertinent facts, the last sentence in the second paragraph, the awards were made by line item to the lowest responsive, responsible bidder? How can you be lowest responsive and responsible all in one sentence?
The lowest responsive, I'm sorry, let me pull that back up. The lowest responsive is the one who met all of the criteria. We originally were going to award it to the person who pulled out, that's why. We ended up loading it or awarding the bid to the one bidder that remained on that contract. So they wouldn't have won it, but they did. It's always, it's actually, there's really two companies. It's close every time we put a bid out. They know what each other by and large, I mean, there's really not significant differences, but it does go back and forth routinely.
Yes, Ms. Plunkett.
So who was the contractor for the first quarter, just out of curiosity?
I don't recall, I know on this one bid, it was Cisco that dropped out.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay. I'd like to know if there's any other non-action items that board members would like pooled for discussion.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Memorandum number 011, this is a matter of first impression to me, I've never dealt with making a decision like this before. I was wondering, I was going to seek some more information about this or between here and our next meeting when we take action on this. I'm curious, it doesn't, the memorandum doesn't address what the rules are regarding, gives a list, a long list of the potential recipients, but it doesn't explain how they determine what goes to what recipients, where they all get an equal amount.
I can clarify that, when, because I've done this, when you make the contribution, you designate or you let United Way make that designation.
Okay. I'll probably have some questions about this and I'll be researching over the next couple of weeks.
Sure, thank you. Any other memos to be pooled? Seeing none, move to future items, future business. We move to our third public testimony opportunity on non-agenda and non-action items. Is there anybody in the audience wishing to speak? Sir, please come forward. And please state your name for the record.
Brendan Wilson, I'm the President of the Anchorage Principals Association and technically this is an action item, but I think you'll forgive me. I just want to take an opportunity to say thank you for acting on our agreement tonight and for passing it. I'd also like to thank Mr. Hess and the district team for negotiating in good faith and for taking a leap of faith in joining us in interest-based bargaining for the first time. We appreciate your efforts. And finally, Dr. Bishop, thank you for your support and always advocating for principals, teachers and students. We truly look forward to continuing to work with you. We share your dreams and goals, as well as the boards for our students.
Would you like to introduce other members of your team in the audience?
I believe Mr. Hauser, our Vice President, and he was a member of our negotiating team is here as well.
Thank you, thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to testify? Okay, we move to school board and administration comments or communications. Ms. Marsette.
I was waiting in case somebody else wanted to go first. So I did a couple of things. I went to Cassoon for their back-to-school ice cream social, which was really cool because, you know, it's one of our new SBBS programs and I talked to the Man Eye staff there and they were so happy. They said everybody was so welcoming. They said, one gentleman Chuck and another lady said HR was absolutely wonderful processing their paperwork. They had been in other schools and they said it was not that efficient and so they were very happy. They felt like that the other staff was very welcoming, which I thought that was great. I toured the rooms, they were getting them set up. Everything looked good, a couple of students, they let them come in and take a look at the rooms with their parents and, you know, of course, little uncertainties like, you know, where do the buses drop them off and that sort of thing, but, and I'm just going to say Anita, because I can't remember her last name, Stevens, thank you. I'm doing good to remember first names. But anyway, she's the new principal there and people just loved her, parents, students, everybody wanted to come up and meet her. I mean, it was just such a welcoming, happy, I mean, I guess anytime you hand out popsicles, that's a plus, but it was really, really a great atmosphere and I was very happy to see it. Let me see, what else did I do? I can't think of anything else, but the other thing that I did learn that I thought was very interesting is, I don't know if some of you know, I was a firefighter for a day with someone else here and one of the things I learned that I didn't know is they have an explorer program for students that are in high school and age 14. So you have to be 14 and you have to be in high school, but it's a explorer program for, that you kind of go through and it's, I mean, you learn about firefighting, but it's so much more than that. It's about team building, it's about being responsible, it's about leading, I mean, it's just about all of these things and if you're really into it, you can go right from that to UAF into their program and then actually go out and be a fireman, but very impressed with the program. I don't know if all of our students know this, we definitely need to get the word out there. This is something that they are very proud of and I think it's just another great program for our students to take a look at. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nellie.
There was a committee meeting that I went to down in Portland that I forgot to speak to.
Thank you, please talk about that, yeah.
I'll just, I'll highlight some of the things. I will send out to the board a 1,500-page, all-inclusive agenda because Council of Great City Schools does not do anything small, but within that, if you do actually take some time to read it, there is some really good information.
Send the executive summary.
But, you know, a lot of the things that we covered was loss of title funds, we admitted some new districts, we did our annual budget for the following year. I am, so I don't know if some of you know, I sit on the Executive Committee for the Council of Great City Schools, I'm one of 24 members that sit on that. I've been assigned to the Audit Committee and the Professional Development Committee, so I'll be needing some guidance on that one. But one of the other things that we did is we did discuss where our next Executive Committee meeting would be for July of 2018. And so Executive Committee members and, you know, probably their spouses, because who doesn't want to come to Anchorage, Alaska in July is all going to be up here. And so we, Anchorage will be hosting July 2018. July 2018, it's like that third week and so, got a couple of paper documents, but I will send out that PDF for you. It's 120 megs.
Thank you and thank you for representing not only our district, but our state on that national board. We appreciate that. Yes, Mr. Holden.
Yes, a lot of activity around the district. A week ago, I sort of made a joke to a lot of people about teachers' first day back. They've been back for over a month easily, the buildings have been. They've been back for over a month easily, the buildings have been busy, people have been busy with different things. But something I miss terribly at this point, when students show up, everything changes. And it's very much like you finally light the Christmas tree, and it's really Christmas at that point. So congratulations to everybody for having them back in the buildings, and everything is really rolling off to a great start. A week ago, I found myself having to get fingerprinted. I won't go into details, it's a huge misunderstanding, but everybody else in the building was there because they're onboarding with ASD and going through that process. And of course, one part is they're excited to be part of it. The other part is, it just plays into the crunch that, what's become the June budget process, that this isn't where you want people to be a week before school starts. You want that to have been done a month ago, or far in advance. But all that got pushed off until the last minute, but at the same time, people are doing everything they need to do in order to make it all happen. Lastly, last spring, I had the opportunity to drop in and witness some of middle school state championship debate. It's awe-inspiring. It is a highly energized group of kids striving hard for academic and intellectual excellence. And anybody associated with education that saw this anywhere would want to know how we could get a piece of it and make it happen for our local community. The scheduling thing is a huge curveball to it. It's knocking out some of the key people in it. It was on an upward trend, it was involving a lot more kids. I've got some video that I actually made, because this is a case where it almost mimics football. You're talking about kids huddling, strategizing, and literally running to where the next event is going to be as contestants in an intellectual exercise. It's not like anything else you get to see normally. Very combative, they don't actually get to hit each other, they have to do it all verbally and intellectually, but they're excellent. I think we get some victims at the end, but everybody comes out better for being in it. It's going to take, I think, some ingenuity to figure out how to get around the scheduling block. There's not a simple solution to it, but we absolutely need to preserve this and make it grow. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also am very interested in preserving debate in the schools. I'm very biased on the subject. I debated at Central Junior High, at Mears Junior High, Diamond High School, at the University of Oregon, on a intercollegiate level. I judged Anchorage School District debate for three years back in the 1970s and 80s, and I just am a strong supporter, so I'm very interested in what kind of solutions we can come up with to address these concerns, because I really think it pays off throughout life.
I didn't know you were a duck, Mr. Donnelly.
I think you put those skills to use in the legislature, too, I seem to recall. So I'll take the opportunity to go last, and once again, I'm going to use the same metaphor, and you guys are going to get sick of this, because it's going to happen all year, about the iceberg. Today, I visited three of the schools in my assigned area this year. I started at Bartlett, then I moved to Begage, and then to Muldoon, and in all, and obviously, then too, at the grand opening of the Alaska Middle College School, for which we need to do a shout-out to Kathy Moffett. Give her a big hand, please. But in all schools, if you were to just pop in and you see this very smooth-running machine, even, I said at 7:40 in the halls of Bartlett High School, it was as quiet as a morgue, and yet there were students there. There were hundreds and hundreds of students in those classrooms. So you just see the tip of the iceberg, and you think, oh, wow, you know, this is easy. What you don't see is the enormous piece of the iceberg of all the preparation, and that's what I want to acknowledge, all the work of the staff here in this building, in terms of the professional development that's been happening, the hiring, all of that background work, the IT work, making sure the computers are there, all of that support to make this day happen. All of the training that teachers did last week, I spent some of my time in three of the different capturing kids' hearts trainings, and my heart was captured. I watched the instructional coaches go through some of their training, and also talked with some of our new teachers at their induction. And all of that takes a lot of time and work, and that's, you know, as everyone in theater knows, they see this very well-executed play, and they think, wow, that was easy, but I know better, and I know what you do, and I truly appreciate all of the work of your staff, Dina, and all of the players in this wonderful theater of learning. I also want to recognize again, as Dr. Bishop made in her statement that's available on the web, that we often speak about the diversity in this school district and all the language we speak, and maybe we take it for granted that people understand when we do that, we're speaking with pride, and that we recognize that as part of our gifts and part of our wealth in this community, that diversity, and that racism and all of the isms have no place within our district, and I believe our board stands united on that. I want to do a shout-out to one particular teacher. I was having a little, picked me up yesterday at the nail salon, having a pedicure done, and right next to me sat an elementary teacher having a pedicure while she studied her Cengage ELA curriculum. And I said, I'm going to do a shout-out, because that's dedication. And her name was Kim Colton from Willowcrest Elementary School, and I already alerted her principal that I was very impressed. So again, we wish everyone a successful school year, and we'll be holding our superintendent's feet to the fire, because we have high hopes for the continued academic proficiency and growth of all of our students, and we all make that happen. Thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
I move to adjourn.
It's been moved and seconded, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Nice job.
Thank you.
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 Thank you.